Welcome to the Spent the Rent Podcast. I am your host, Patty Rose. My guest today is a candidate for the school board in Springfield, Oregon, Anthony Reed. Anthony, welcome to the show.
Thank you. Thanks for having me.
This is the second run for you for school board. I had you on the last time around. I was a big supporter of your candidacy. And I will say that this time it seems like you have a lot more wind behind your sails and it's showing. So I wanted to kind of just jump right in, talk about what's different about this time around. What did you learn from the last run for school board? And how has this time's campaign felt different?
Yeah, it's definitely night and day for my first campaign. The first time around, I wasn't quite sure how to campaign. I'd never done that before. And was just learning as I go. Not to say that I don't think we ran a great campaign. I think I learned a lot as I went along and we had a lot of support. From friends and family that that helped. But this time around, you know, after I lost last time, I went through the Oregon Labor Candidate School, which for people that don't know, as a member of a labor union, a union carpenter, I was able to take part in a six month school where they teach you how to campaign and fundraise and get all kinds of, and stuff surrounding campaigning. So my knowledge on campaigning is incredibly different than it was the first time around. And also, races like this are a lot of name recognition.
Sure.
And so having run before, I have gotten some name recognition that way. But I think just after losing the last election, but just staying involved in the community and not just disappearing.
Right.
Helped a lot.
Right. And, and I think, you know, I mean, the last time around, it was really getting a lot of attention in an off, off election year. The school board, I did, I don't know if anyone, if you're, if you're listening and you tuned in when we did that, I did three interviews in one day. I interviewed, Kelly, Kelly, and then I interviewed Maya Rabasa, and then I interviewed you. And I did like 20, 25 minute interviews for each of you. And it was a roller coaster and it was a lot of fun. It was just a challenge for something. And I gotta be honest, at that time, I had no concept what it is, what does a school board member do, you know? And I think a lot of times people still feel that way. They're like, what is it that you do? But now there's so many turbulent issues being discussed that I think people are starting to understand a little more. And we're going to talk about that a little bit as we go along. On the last run, one of the things that you were really adamant about was a push for vocational training at the high school level. I want you to talk first about why you're such an advocate about that. And, you know, talk about ways that you might be able to implement some vocational training at the high school level.
Yeah. Um, so as I said, I'm a union carpenter. So the CTE in, in that aspect is right up my alley. I'm loving all that stuff. And, um, and they've done a lot of great work around CTE already. I'm not suggesting that we need to start from scratch or that it's not already happening. I just want to expand those programs with more partnerships with businesses, you know, and with labor unions. And so you're not just learning those skills, but there's a direct pathway to actually get jobs after graduation. You can teach whatever you want, but without the support to take, get to that next step, you know, it's a lot harder for, uh, for the students.
Right. And have the bridge, you know, it's like when I went to barber school, uh, they do, they call it a salon ready and it's only one day, but they basically like have connections. So there's people that are like, well, this person's looking for someone, let me introduce you. And they kind of help with that. Speaking of beauty school and barbering, Springfield Public Schools, I talked about it last episode, they're implementing a cosmetology training, uh, for Springfield Public Schools. Uh, I think it's 15 kids a year is, is, is how many people. Some of the critics say that it's too small of a group to make a dent as compared to the cost associated. What are your thoughts on opportunities like this? And what would you say to the critics, uh, you know, that are like, well, it only helps a few people?
Well, I mean, that's a valid point that there's, that there is a small number, but you have to start somewhere.
Right.
And I don't know if the cost benefit analysis really should be around what, uh, you know, how many kids we're helping, we're helping kids. First of all, but if you're going to do the cost analysis, it needs to be on, uh, do we have the funds, you know, we're being, we're being good financial stewards of the district's money. Making sure that that is the best place to spend it. So that's definitely something I would be interested in looking into, but, uh, but just hearing about the program, sounds great. You gotta start somewhere and you can always build and expand on that program. It's also nice is, uh, I am particularly interested in, in carpentry and, you know, in the, the labor unions, that kind of, those kinds of trades. But it's been pointed out to me, hey, you don't just focus on that. There's also nursing and, um, you know, like you said, cosmetology bar, but there's all kinds of different things that we could get under that CTE umbrella. I think the important thing is just making sure that we're collaborating with the businesses in our community and making sure that we're bridging that gap from getting that, those students educated to getting them jobs.
Right. And I think that that's, you know, a really important part of running for office is not just doing what you want, is learning what the constituents want that are probably not going to support, or some might not support you. But once you, you know, if you win, you want to still represent them. You know, and that's the challenge, especially in a town like Springfield where people don't really wear their politics on their sleeve as much typically, which I think is a good thing. I mean, I, I think that you would be surprised sometimes knowing the political views of some of the Springfield residents.
Oh, I have been.
You know, I mean, even with you, you know, it's like a pretty liberal guy and a kind of a more blue collar work. I think it's because you're a hundred percent pro-union, you know, and that kind of stuff. But, uh, actually, let's just talk about that. I didn't really write this. I didn't, I didn't prep you for this one, but let's talk about your ethos. I mean, as far as like your bullet points, what are you telling people? I know you're, you're hitting the campaign trail pretty hard. What is, if you, if you're, if you have two minutes with someone and they're like, well, why should I vote for you? What do you tell them?
Yeah, right now it's tough. Um, as you know, uh, my wife is a teacher, so teacher burnout is high, is a high priority for me because I see it every day. You know, my wife's a phenomenal teacher. She goes to school, she puts in her all from, you know, 5:30 in the morning till 5:30 at night. And that's just so she can get home and keep, keep on working. So getting our teachers the support they need so they can support our students appropriately is definitely a high priority for me. Unfortunately, on the campaign trail, I've had a chance to talk with a lot of people and I've heard a lot of personal stories about students being physically injured, emotionally hurt, um, whether it be assaulted or bullied or whatever you, you know, what have you. Story after story of this happening and the families trying to advocate and get help and not being able to find the pathway to get that, that those problems resolved. And these poor kids have to go to school every day. They're going back, back into the environment that's, that's traumatized them. And, um, you know, just, just the thought of a school being a place where, where you would develop trauma is, is not what we want, obviously in Springfield School District.
Right.
So safety is a huge topic, you know, making sure, and I don't just mean safety from, uh, you know, from school shooters, but safety from bullies, safety from harassment or racism. You know, and making sure that our kids can come to school and feel like this is a place where everyone is welcome and that they're, that they're safe.
Right. So, uh, school boards across America have had heated fights over a lot of major issues. And we're going to talk about a couple of them. And this is tough, you know, because this is where it's like a line gets drawn in the sand. And I don't think it needs to be that way. I think that what we need to remember is that we need to allow people to have perspectives, especially with something that involves their children, you know, because this is a difficult thing. I know that the last time around, we were talking, my buddy Zach Pissett, who was on the school board, was so frustrated that he was kind of on social media, was kind of being, uh, sharp tongued and stuff with people. And rightfully so, because he was exhausted. But I, I think that, you know, I thought at the time it was funny, you know, standing up to people, but I realize now it's like, it's kind of not when, it's difficult because you know, like I have, I don't want to talk on it too much because it's kind of personal. But someone in our family, uh, girlfriend's family, they have really strong Christian values, right? And so they're not sure if they, if they want their kid to be in public school when they're not around to be exposed to the type of stuff at the age, you know, when you're talking about gender and that kind of stuff at a certain age, it's difficult. And that's a family's right to have a way that they perceive that, you know? And so those are difficult things. I wanted to talk first, you know, about, uh, school boards across America that have had heated fights over, uh, how to address our nation's racist history and gender and sexuality education. So we'll start with race. My feelings are that there's two camps. There's racist and anti-racist. And this is something that was really difficult for me to come to this. You know, I, I was taught color blindness growing up. And I realize now why that's wrong, because that doesn't allow someone to have part of the story. You know, because my story is an Irish immigrant or like families, Irish and Hungarian immigrants at different times on each side. I have this sense of pride of Ellis Island, you know, and I have this sense of pride like that, that's this, that's, and I'm sure yours is similar, you know, it's probably the exact same. You know, and, and it's really something special. And then I realized talking about ancestry, that that's not something that everybody gets to feel, you know, because if you were a slave or you were an immigrant, and even the Irish people, when they came were treated like shit. But like, if you were an immigrant, you know, from Mexico or whatever, and you're treated as a second class citizen, that you don't get part of the story. So we have to find a way to, to be able to teach our history so that we're being honest, but also include everybody in the story, you know? And I'd imagine, I'd imagine you'd be, you'll be asked this from every angle, but what are your thoughts? And what do you tell people when buzzwords like critical race theory are brought up? They're like, what are you, you're teaching critical race theory? No one wants to actually have a conversation about what that means.
Right.
So how do you address those questions?
Well, first of all, you have to, you have to decide whether someone is talking about what critical, actual critical race theory as in like law school version, critical race theory. And if that's what they're really talking about, it's a short conversation. It's not being taught in our schools. But more, more often what they're talking about is, is what, is what you mentioned, you know, teaching accurate history and not shying away from the, from the tough subjects. Taking what has historically been taught in schools, a whitewashed history, uh, who leave, we leave out certain things or even completely make up lies.
Right.
You know, and teach, and teach that. So, um, I think leaning into that, that history and learning about it and using that when we know better, we do better, right? Using that to build, um, our communities is a great thing, but people are scared of, of how it makes them feel. And I got on earlier when you said, you know, you talked about being racist or anti-racist and how that was, it took you a while to really figure that out and internalize all of that. Well, that journey that you took, similar to a journey that I've taken, we should be facilitating that, that journey for our students and for our families, not just students, but, um, you know, like you said, parents come in and say, oh, why are you teaching CRT? You need to stop teaching this and that. Well, maybe they don't really know, you know, that they don't know what's going on, or maybe they're not sure how to talk about it.
Yeah.
So creating programs that would, would help parents facilitate those conversations. Why, if we're going to support our students as best as possible, we should be supporting the parents and giving them the tools to help their students, right? Help their children.
I mean, you talked about bullying, right? You want it safety, right? And this is across the board. You don't want a trans kid to be bullied. You don't want a kid that's a Christian in a school that's not predominantly, you know, that doesn't reflect the population maybe, because that exists. You don't want to see a person of color to be singled out, you know, that's the point. It's like, we want to educate ourselves on the differences. But this is where there's an issue, is that when you are having the conversation with people on the campaign trail, they want, they say those, that, that lip service, but it's like, when they talk about religious rights and all that stuff, you're like, I'm actually saying I'm representing a fight for your religious rights too. It can't just be just that.
Right.
You know, that's, that's the difficult part.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. That it includes everyone, but that's, that's why you have to teach not just the history, but how to have those conversations. You're, what you're talking about is adults who haven't learned how to have those conversations. So right now, if you're, if you have people who are getting angry or wanting to come and attack me on the, on the campaign trail about whatever the situation is, it's simply because they haven't learned how to have a, a productive conversation.
Yeah.
You know, they don't have the emotional intelligence to have a conversation without, uh, demanding that you see things their way.
I think it's a little bit kinder to call it a toolkit, you know, like they, they don't have the toolkit because some people weren't given the toolkit, you know what I'm saying? Like when you say emotional intelligence, I, it's almost a dig, I think, but I.
Well, not at all. And I don't mean that they're not an intelligent person, but emotional intelligence is not something you're born with. It's something that you.
That you have to work on.
Harness over.
And nurture. And I mean, you know, like as far as with race, I'm the first person to admit that I have had to work hard. Not that I, I, I've learned a lot, not that I, I've always called it fear racism. There's fear and hate, you know, there's fear of, you know, I don't want to look stupid. I don't want to hurt someone's feelings. So sometimes it can come from a good place where, where, I don't know about racism. I'm just saying like where, where, where you're outcasting. You know what I'm saying? Because you're like, oh, this person's different. I don't want to make them feel different. And then you make them feel worse. You know what I'm saying? Like that's something that I was constantly worried about because I just didn't know much about cultures, you know, and it's taken me a long time to kind of get to that point, being a barber on campus, meeting tons of people from all over the world that are constantly in transition, going everywhere. It's just, it's been awesome. And I've learned a lot about myself by experiencing those conversations and then also travel, you know, helps a lot. Like when you can actually get outside your comfort zone, you realize that we're not the only people that kind of have a kick ass place to live, you know, you know what I'm saying? Like, I mean, you know, so.
Well, and that goes back to emotional intelligence, you know, part of emotional intelligence is being able to accept other people's points of view and not, you know, it's, it's okay for you to have your point of view and it's okay for me to have my point of view and we can still be friends and we can still, you know, hang out. We don't have to agree on everything and that's fine. Um, I agree with you though, that it's, it's your life experiences, you know, people I think, especially around here, it's easy to become ethnocentric, you know, you, you see things from the view of your, of how you were raised or what culture you have. And if you aren't exposed to other cultures and if you aren't exposed, uh, to other ways of thought, then you're going to assume that the one way that you've been exposed to your entire life is the truth. That's, that's just the way it is, right? And so we can do more in schools, uh, to help, I think, that situation by just exposing students to other cultures, you know, bringing in presentations from other cultures or, or what have you. But, um, making sure that if you're not getting that exposure at home, you are getting it at school.
The thing that I have a hard time with, with, with all this, when you talk, I'm the one that said it, but like with cultures, it's like, what is the culture that of, I mean, is it like a urban rural kind of thing? Like whether we have to educate people on like white culture, like what is it? What is white culture? I always call it Walmart culture. Cause I mean, country music and like country life, that's country life, not music. I'm just saying like that, that isn't, that is the culture. That is one, you know what I'm saying? Like it's not, it's not, there isn't one culture that's white, you know, you know what I'm saying? Like the, the, that's, that's the whole point. Cause to me, American culture is the melting pot, right? So that's what, I mean, that's what we were taught, you know, like ideally.
Yeah. And maybe that's what we were taught, but I feel like, um, even just in the, the two times that I've even, uh, been a candidate, talking to different people from different cultures, there isn't one American culture. America is a bunch of cultures that sometimes, especially in our community, brushed by each other, but never the two shall mix. You know, there's people in our community that we don't even know exist or that we haven't, haven't been exposed to their cultures because we don't, uh, we don't have a lot of common shared spaces.
And it's because, and, and you were saying like the, I was saying the toolkit, right? That's like, I use the, the example of the Sikh faith, for example. You're not going to cut a lot of people's hair that are Sikh because they don't get haircuts a lot of times, but I've done some beard trims and, uh, and man, I've been blessed for meeting people that have been willing to have me ask the cringey, cringey questions. And just like, what is your, what's all, what's it all about? How the, how the religion, you know, originate and all that kind of stuff. And, and it was just amazing getting to know people. And, and, and so, yeah, I mean, I don't know. I've seen the, the results that can come from it, but yeah, as far as in a school board, we're in a really difficult time because when you have such a strong divide and you're talking about issues that define someone's ethos, basically about like, uh, tolerance versus conservatism, you know, you know, or.
Intolerance.
Right. And that goes both ways. It very much can. I always want to be careful not to make false equivalences, but I'm just trying to say that it's not just, I'm not attacking one side, you know? And, and what works in Eugene is not what works in Springfield on running a campaign. I mean, flat out. And it's not just about this is lip service. This is genuine. This is genuinely wanting the future of our town to improve, right? You know, so, I just think that it's a difficult task, you know, a lot of the stuff, uh, involving race, involving gender. I don't know. Did you hear about, I'm sure you did, about the situation, you know where I'm going? The situation at Churchill High School, there was a, and maybe you know a little more about this, but there was an assignment that I believe was supposed to be a group project in class about, um, intimacy, basically. And it was talking about ways that, uh, people could be intimate without having intercourse. And this is for high school students under the age of 18. I think it might've been seniors regardless. It's high school students. Cause you know, what the two months with, I don't, but anyway, so the assignment was basically asking questions like, what would you, uh, use, whether it be toys, candles, uh, you know, ice cubes, so that you can be intimate without having intercourse. And the issue that I saw was that they were doing the assignment at all. Like I think it's pretty questionable. Like I, I think that, I do think that sex education is important, but I don't know if there's going to be, it's going to be a tough sell for parents. When it's like, uh, I don't think that you are, we're going to give you the qualification to have that conversation with my child. First of all, it opens so many doors to issues like kids that are like not sexually active, which is totally acceptable. You know, like that, you know, I don't, I don't, I think that that's more normal than not. What were your thoughts when you read about this? First of all, second of all, it's like anytime we're on Fox News, it's not good in Eugene, but what were your thoughts? So yeah, the assignment was then sent home, I think was the issue. It was, there was a couple of students that had missed class. So they sent it home and it had questions like, that attached it to the individual that were like, what is your sexual preference? What is your, you know? So did you read about that? You did read about it.
I, I haven't heard about it. I heard about it, but, um, I don't, it sounds like you know quite a bit more than I do about it. Um, it's always going to be a touchy subject. I mean, even last time I ran around, uh, ran, this was not, this, that didn't happen obviously yet. But that's a question I got a lot was about sex education and, um, and it's my position, I support the, what, kind of how we run things now is that you opt in or you can opt out. I guess it's not an opt-in program. It's an opt-out program, but you can opt out if you feel like your kids are, are not ready for that, or you don't want them to hear about that kind of stuff. And I don't mean about what was going on in Churchill. I mean about standard, standard sex ed as we know it, or as you and I probably had it, uh, you know, a hundred years ago, but.
Right.
But, um, I think sex ed is important, you know, and not only, not only in school, but if for, for parents who want to opt out of that, again, we go back to if you want to support the students, you need to support the parents, giving parents, uh, support through a class or through, um, you know, however, whoever can facilitate that conversation and help them, whether it be a school counselor or whatnot. I think it's a great idea to give the parents the tools to have those conversations on their own if they want to.
Yeah.
Hey, I don't want you teaching my kid about that. That's my job. Maybe they don't have the tools, but we can, we could build something for that. But.
Uh, yeah.
It's a health, it's a health issue really, when it comes down to making sure that kids know about, uh, sex ed and about abstinence, definitely as a choice, you know? And hey, I guarantee you're not going to get any STDs if you're abstinent.
Yeah, I know that, I know that, that abstinence only education, and that's not at all what you're saying. It's, it's packaged with abstinence, smarter choices, protection, you know, uh, and then, you know, that when you get into birth control and all that kind of stuff, that's where it gets, these issues are so difficult because you're dealing with minors where there's this, some parents feel like they have an ownership over, you know, there's rights of a child too.
Right.
I mean, it seems like the rights are really, uh, in place when they're conceived, you know, you know, but what about when they're.
A lot of that. Um, and not just in the sex ed, but I think in education where we end up finding these issues, like what happened at Churchill, is where you go from just presenting information to asking questions or delving into certain thing, you know, certain topics in a way that's not presenting the information, you know what I mean? If you're asking them, hey, what, what are your, what are your interests sexually? That's highly inappropriate. That obviously doesn't belong in that class. But, um, presenting like, if you want to talk about, um, contraception, different types, these are what's available, you know, this is what is available in the world. This is how they work. Um, and this is their effectiveness rate or whatever you want to have, you know, whatever the information is you need to have. You could present that information without saying, hey, do you use ice cubes or candles? You know, that seems a little extreme.
I, I do think that there, there is some good intent, at least the way that I was reading about it, it seemed to me, because I think that people are trying to make people have a positive relationship with sex. And I think a lot of times we don't, you know, like a lot of times we have this, we're doing something mischievous, you know, especially when you're young, you know, and, and then men are, you know, basically trained to be pigs. And, and then, and then we have to constantly make it seem like that's not what's going on in our heads because that's the way we've been conditioned a lot of times. And that's evolving. I mean, I was raised by my mom, you know, so, uh, but I'm still like very much a visual person, just like anyone else. And like, I'm not, you know, a perfect person when it, I mean, the way that we used to be, like if you asked for consent to kiss somebody, she would look at you weird, right? The times have changed, which is good. My, my kids and I had those conversations, like you said, because consent was being talked about in school and things like that. And then we had those conversations where they kind of showed me that they were a little bit more advanced with it than I was even ready to talk about.
That's often the case with my, my own children as well.
Right. So I don't know. It's just a different, an interesting thing, but I wanted to touch on that a little bit. So I, I, I wanted to talk about school violence, but before we get to that, I want to talk a little bit about, we're going to completely change gears about some of your endorsements. And, and why this, I mean, anybody that's listening to this, uh, they can look up your Facebook page. Do you have a website or is it just the Facebook page?
We just, we have a campaign Facebook page right now. Yeah.
Yeah, that's all you need. So, uh, Anthony Reed for Springfield School Board on Facebook. Uh, and then, you know, there's going to be links to all that stuff on this, wherever you're listening or watching this. You know, but you have worked, you had pushed really hard for Val Hoyle. I know that Val Hoyle is, uh, she was the labor secretary and commissioner, labor commissioner, and you were adamant when she was running for Congress that she was your pick. Even though there was a lot of people in the Democratic Party during the primary that were split on it. And so, uh, her endorsement of you is, that's gotta be, feel pretty good. Tell me what, tell me what that's like, you know, getting these endorsements from major, from Val Hoyle sitting Congresswoman, and also from unions that I know that you're so union strong. It's gotta mean a lot to you when all those people back you, you know?
Yeah. Well, those two are not mutually exclusive. Uh, the Val Hoyle endorsement is, is a, um, is a labor champion endorsement. Um, Val walks the walk, you know what I mean? Uh, the first time I ran, I contacted her, had no idea who she was, didn't know her, um, let her know that I was a union carpenter. She said, hey, we, we, I ran my first campaign out of your guys' union hall. Whatever you need, I got you. You're, you know, you're a carpenter. And she was not kidding. Uh, you know, anytime I asked anything, she was right on top of it, helping me out during my campaign. I was able to get the endorsement. She invited me to her home to sign, to sign the paper for the endorsement and, you know, we can't, we became friends and I've, uh, since then, it was an easy, uh, answer when she asked me if I'd be in the ad that, that we were, they ran the commercial, which was something as a carpenter that I never imagined filming a commercial, the, you know, the whole.
So you're talking, she endorsed you on the first run?
She did.
Wow. Yeah. Cause that was, and I say wow, because it was, you were relatively unknown.
Absolutely.
You know, and, and came out of nowhere and didn't have the backing of the, the party, let alone, you know, I mean, these are I think nonpartisan seats, but that being said, you're being a lot of.
I did have the backing. I was endorsed by the DPLC the first time.
Yes, but.
I had their endorsement, but.
Yes, but this time like, it was like, you're being pushed. I know that there's not a ton on the ballot this time around, but this, you're the name I've heard, you know, so.
So on the, um, as far as on the ballot goes, is there was, there was actually three people, kind of a funny story, um, on the ballot for my race. And in the 11th hour, um, I got a call from someone who said, hey, you might want to reach out to this person who's also a Democrat. And talk to them about what's going on and try to collaborate, you know, figure out who's, who should run, I guess, because, um, you're really, when you run multiple people from the same, from the, that have very similar views and values, then anyone you run to for an endorsement is like, well, yeah, you guys are very similar. I'm going to endorse, I'll endorse you both.
Right.
But then you're splitting support, right? You're splitting either, either their hands are tied and they can't support either of you because they've endorsed both of you. At that point, you can't favor one or the other, or maybe you don't give any support and you just say, hey, I'll give you the endorsement, but we're not, we can't support you further.
Right.
So I asked him, why, why are you running? And he said, um, I saw that Nicole DeGraff was running for this position and I was terrified. I didn't want her to, to win. So I, I, and she was the only one that had filed, so I jumped in the race.
What's the story with your opponent? I mean, is that something that you're talking about or you're just kind of only focusing on your campaign?
I'm, I'm really focused on my campaign and what, what, uh, what we need to do for Springfield School District right now.
Yeah. It is just a polarizing time. So I know that, I mean, I know that I, I thought that I heard somebody was running. I'm not sure if it's your seat, but that was involved with an altercation at the Black Lives Matter protest.
So at the Black Unity Protest out in Thurston, uh, near my house, there was a gal who, I believe, I'm sure you saw the video, was riding around the back of a pickup truck.
Yeah, yeah.
Really, we're going to go get these, these protesters and, uh, and she's the one that talked to the police. The police then told her right where she could go and find those, you know, the protesters where they had funneled them back to. Yeah, it was Gina Shipman was her name at the time during that. Um, I, I've heard she's had several names, but it was Gina Shipman. And then now I think she's filed under Gina Davis.
Okay.
But yeah, it's the same, it's the same gal.
And that, oh, is that, is that a different seat or is that, that's your seat?
I mean, that's the same gal that was, that what, that you're talking about. That was, that was out there. She's in, uh, position one. And there's four people I believe in position one. The person that I'm running against, Nicole DeGraff, she is, uh, she's run for state legislature a couple of times. Um, she's a grassroots organizer for Oregon Moms Union. And yeah, it's just, just the two of us in our race, which kind of keeps things, keeps things simple. And we have so the other guy, different views, very different backers. Uh, so there's no, no real.
So the other guy did, he did respectfully bow out. Is that what you're saying?
Oh, yeah. Sorry. I didn't.
I interrupted.
Right. So, uh, so I asked him if he was, why he was running. He told me he didn't want Nicole to win. And then I asked him what his experience was campaigning and he said, none. And I said, well, I'll tell you what, um, I have, have some experience and I've, you know, gone through this Oregon Labor Candidate School and, um, and I think I've got a better shot. But I'm willing to offer, would you like to look behind the curtain and see what this campaign's about? You know, you're worn, welcome to join our team, see what it takes to campaign. And when I get on the school board, you're welcome to be involved in that process as much. in that process as much as you'd like to learn about it. And I can share, you know, my experience. And if in two years, when it's time for another election, you wanna run again, I'll fully support you, you know, and then help, and help you run, help you out. And, uh, and he thought that sounded great. It was like 4:30, you could, you could withdraw at 5:00 PM. And he said, okay. And withdrew in the last like 20 minutes that you could.
Wow. That's awesome.
Yeah.
Uh, so I've got one more thing. Oh, two, uh, I wanted to talk about educational equity. Uh, you are a parent of a student who experiences exceptionalities. So I wanted to talk a little bit about, uh, what it's like, you know, for a parent, um, with a kid with special needs. And I wanted to give a shout out first to the people at Educational Equity Now, educationalequitynow.com, I believe. I'm not sure if it's dot com or dot org, but you can Google Educational Equity Now. And my buddy Metnells and his wife, uh, have put together this awesome resource for students and parents, uh, of, of kids with special needs. It's really for a lot. I mean, it's more than that, but that's kinda who their, um, mindset was when they were making it. And I think that this is so cool because, you know, especially during COVID, there was a lot of concerns with educational equity, uh, for people maybe that were non-verbal on the autism spectrum, you know, because it was like they were doing online school and they're not really participating at that point. And so that was a separate issue. I can't, first of all, I wanna give you so much credit for stepping up and running after watching what happened in the school boards in, in 2020. So the fact that you still wanna do this, I think says a lot about your character and how much you, you care about your community. Uh, but yeah, talk a little bit about your experience. Uh, you, you have a daughter with special needs. Uh, and, uh, I love your posts all the time on Facebook, or you're like, she wants a birthday gift. And everyone's like, happy birthday, happy birthday. You know, and so talk about what it's like in, in, in our community. Maybe you have a good experience. Maybe, I mean, I'm sure it's mixed.
Hmm. Oh, definitely.
But I wanted to just kinda hear what you have to say. And maybe if there's some areas that you think that public schools in our area could serve special needs students and families a little better.
Yeah. So, um, I'll hit the last point first and say, again, let's go back to expanding support systems for our parents. Um, being the parent of a student with this developmental disabilities is difficult and not, um, it's not something that everyone is, no one is born knowing everything about that, you know? And the best way to, to learn is obviously by just living that life, but also having support around you, having people that have been through, you know, through parenting, um, similar situations. Um, in our community, I would say people in general are supportive. Um, as far as resources for our graduates with developmental disabilities, it's limited. Um, I feel extremely blessed, uh, that we have become part of Allies. Um, Allies LLC is in Eugene. And what it is, is it's a group of people who have worked for different organizations who thought, you know what? Things aren't as good as they could be. You know, we, we need to do better for this community.
Sure.
And so they ended up getting together and, and they started this organization where they would bring all of the people that they were, uh, personal service workers for together and do cooking classes or go out on the town or, or do all kinds of things, really enriching activities during COVID. I don't know how many cooking classes I did online with Savannah with my daughter. Um, I have a daughter with Downs and we got, it was so much fun to just be in the kitchen, you know, cooking. We're watching the, you know, the, uh, the teacher on the computer teach us how to do it and try and run back and forth. And it was, it was a lot of fun, but, um, I don't see why we couldn't try to get, build partnerships, you know, with people like Allies. And just like with the jobs, with building community or partnerships with the business community, bridging, you know, bridging those gaps from when they leave the school system and, and then go into the community.
Yeah, this is a bridge issue too. Like this is something that I think is, is, you know, universally, uh, cared about. I know that the chief of police, uh, in Springfield is, his number one group that he always worked with is Special, is Special Olympics, you know? So, I mean, this is definitely an issue that a lot of people care about. That, and I think that's the case for a lot of things. It's just a difference in strategy on how we should fund it.
Yeah. When you talk about, uh, about it being a bridge issue, it definitely is. I mean, if you think about, if you're a parent of a student with developmental disabilities and the school has a phenomenal support system, uh, at the school, and then you're kind of, maybe you're not as well-equipped. How do I say this? Um, once that student graduates, that's over. That's done. And now you, as a parent who also most likely work or, you know, and do, and, and do whatever else, you're gone during the day. Now you have a, you have an adult child at home. But now what? Now what do we do? You know, if, if it's, uh, um, everyone's experience is different. And I don't, I don't wanna try to, you know, make it a cookie cutter experience, but at least for us, we would, Savannah would be at home all day by herself if she didn't have somewhere, you know, somewhere to be. And I don't want, no one wants a placeholder. That's what I, that's my concern is that in, in our schools and in our community, that students and adults with developmental disabilities end up in some kind of placeholder, um, environment. And I, and I don't wanna see that. It breaks my heart. Um, that's why I say we're so blessed to have Allies. It's such an enriching program. Um, and I don't see why we can't emulate
Yeah. I need to reach out to them. I was, you may have mentioned it to me in the past.
You should do a podcast with
I should. I've had so many, I've been inundated with so many acronyms.
Hmm.
You know, everybody's like, have you checked out Allies?
Allies literally means allies. There are allies to the special needs community.
That's amazing. That's amazing. So it's not some long acronym?
No.
Oh, man. Okay. So we got one more thing, and I don't think we can have a podcast about schools without talking about school violence, unfortunately. So I wanted to paint a picture first. Uh, and I wanna take you back to May 20th, 1998. A freshman student at Thurston High School was sent home from school expelled for bringing a fire room to school in his bag. That night, he murdered his parents and then organized an attack on the school. The following day, bright and early, he drove to the school, entered the cafeteria where a senior breakfast was taking place, and he opened fire. Two students were killed, 23 were injured. And if it wasn't for the fact that his gun jammed and two Boy Scouts were able to tackle him, it could've been much, much worse. Uh, I don't even know if there's an answer. And I think that everyone is just throwing their hands up because we cannot even get to a table about what to do about this. But is it even possible for something to be done to prevent school violence?
I think so. Um, it would be a very bleak outlook if we didn't believe that there was something that you could do about it. And I think it all hinges on mental health. You can't, I don't wanna focus on stopping the gunman from getting into the school as much as I wanna focus on making sure these children don't become gunmen.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? And we, and so by supporting our students and making sure that mental health is, is a priority. Again, I do, I'd hate to keep going back to the same thing, but these, creating programs for families to give them the tools, like we talked about earlier, toolkits, you know, for, to deal with kids who are having real mental health crisis.
Yeah.
You know, parent, as a parent, again, no handbook. The kid, you don't have a baby and it comes out with a handbook that says, hey, if your kid's having a hard time in school and getting bullied, here's what you do. You, you know, you, there's resources, but you have to know where to find them. And you have to, you know, you have to actually go out and do it. And sometimes parents are so busy or whatever the reason is, that maybe don't catch those, uh, those clues or those cues that show them, hey, my, my, my son or daughter is having a really hard time right now.
Yeah.
Um, so giving support to our, in our community and making sure there's some resources for parents to, to learn about catching these things before they, before they
Yeah, and like bipolar disorder and manic depression. And I don't know if I trust anybody that doesn't have a mental disorder, because in today's world, I mean, it's just, it's, it's inundating. And we don't even know what the, the tablets and the phones are doing to not just our kids, to us, because I know me and you are on Facebook way too much, you know? And, and so it's just, we don't even know the, the trauma that is happening. Now, I hope it's okay that I talk about this, but my stepson and I had a little bit of a fight, which is normal because he's 22. We had a little bit of a tiff, you know, just some bickering back and forth or whatever. It's totally average, totally standard. He storms out. I'm listening to a podcast, uh, and this is gonna be kinda personal, but I'm gonna talk about it. But I'm listening to a podcast about BPD, bipolar disorder.
Hmm.
And he had, he, with Pete Davidson, who's like his idol. And it was the perfect thing for me to hear in that moment. And it sounds so funny listening to this snarky comedian, but it made me understand my son better. You know, you know, because I'm willing to understand where he's coming from because he has to lash, his reaction is to lash out in anger. And I'm, I'm trying to actually process, not only like, I wanna process how we can work together on this. And, and it's not just like, he's not gonna do what I want, period. That just doesn't work. You know, that method of like, you just need to follow the same plan that I had. But I don't know. It, I don't know where I was going with that. But, but
When, uh, when you get into these, this tussle, um, are you, are you starting by validating his feelings?
Yeah. And, and, and maybe not initially. Right, right, right. Exactly. And so this is the thing that I think is so important. Toolkits for parents as well as students, you know, and, and the luxury of being a, a stepparent, there's a lot of challenges, but one of the luxuries is that it's not really on you a lot of times. Like, like the, it doesn't
I would beg to differ. I have three, three stepkids and, uh,
It just depends. It just depends. Sometimes you can kinda put your hands up and be like, I'm not, I, I'm, I'm, my partner's amazing about how she's not expecting me to be like this superhero overnight kinda thing, you know? But I don't know where I was going with that. I'm just saying, I understand parents with different issues with kids. And when we talk about violence, which is what we were talking about, the issue is anger. The issue is anger and hatred. And the most hated person for a shooter is themselves.
Hmm.
You know, and that's something that we have to find ways, uh, you know, to love each other again, to find ways to love people that we disagree with, find ways to love people that we might think that their viewpoint is abhorrent, but those people have a decent heart, you know, some of, I mean, ah, some of them. No, 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 all of, I mean, I think that, that it's rare that people don't. I think that we are struck by the negativity that we see because it's so loud, but I think that we see kindness more. And I think that we need to all remember that, you know? So, but yeah, the violence topic, what is happening on the campaign trail? What are people asking you about? Do you get the, I mean, is it just extremes? Are you find, is, is it?
Personal, personal stories, you know, of, of kids who are, are being assaulted or are being, you know, bullied to the, to, to extremes and, and the response isn't, isn't helping the situation, you know? Whatever the schools are doing or aren't doing, it's, it's not helping the situation. And these parents are coming to me as a school board candidate, probably seeing hope for some kind of change, you know? Whether I can, I can be that change or not, I hope to be, you know, I hope to, to move the needle forward on that and try to make our schools a place where all the students feel safe. But I think we all want that, right?
Yeah.
Um, and it goes, I, I, I can tie that easily back into what you were saying about loving one another. And even if you think someone's views are not, uh, or abhorrent, as you say, then it's gonna take all of us, the whole community to, to make our schools as, if we want our schools to be as good as they can be, we need the whole community to work together. And that, so that's the business community, the special needs community, the, um, the school district itself and parents and, and everyone, you know, we all gotta work together. But in order to work together, we gotta get past those differences. And unfortunately, we live in a world where the internet exists and a lot of those algorithms drive us one way or the other. You have a, um, you know, uh, what do they call it? The, confirmation bias where the more, the more you look one way, the more it gives you back further that direction. And it just seems that, you know, like you said, hey, I, uh, you're gonna have, see what you want to see. You actually, you get to pick and choose what you see. So you have kind of catered to yourself with whatever you, whatever you're viewing. Now you're seeing the same thing over and over again. But then the person down the street, or maybe your next door neighbor, has a completely different worldview. And what they're seeing, they believe as well as you believe what you're seeing. But now you both live in two completely different worlds where the facts are different.
Totally.
And some people believe that, you know, uh, whatever. I mean, I could give you a million examples, but you know, uh, January 6th was either some
Tourist
Disorderly tourists or, or it was an insurrection, which are completely polar opposite things. But people believe both of them to be facts.
Yeah. Yeah.
And we have to find a way to say, okay, maybe we can't convince people that we're, we're right. And we, and that's not necessary. We don't need, I don't need you to know I'm right. I don't, yeah, I don't need you to know I'm right for us to work together.
No, there's certain things and, and, and the, the choices that you would be making on a school board that I see. I'll use an example with like, uh, Narcon, is it Narcon? Narcan? Narcan?
Narcan.
So like the, the medicine that is given to somebody that's ODing on, uh, on like fentanyl, right? So this is a rampant issue in our, in our area. And, uh, and I think a bridge, it can become a bridge issue for people too, because the, it's not just about the legalization. We're talking about fentanyl coming into our country through, primarily through the southern border. It's also coming through the northern border. And so this is an issue where immigration, the conversation is, is vast and, and beyond school board. But I know that someone like you and why I support you is because when there's a talk, and I, I haven't heard this proposal. I'm just saying that this is hypothetical. But when they say, okay, we need Narcon, Narcan in our, in school, you know, and I'm sure it already is, but I'm saying we need that in school. There's gonna be pushback. There's gonna be people that are gonna say, no, we don't want kids doing drugs. And this is why I'm voting for Anthony Reed is because I believe that you are somebody that would be like, well, I wish it was that simple. I'm with you. I would, I don't want kids doing drugs at all, you know? But that's not the world we live in. So you're gonna face these issues with reality.
Well, unfortunately, uh, putting your head in the sand doesn't fix anything.
Right.
So we can pretend like it doesn't exist and say, hey, we don't need those things because our kids are just gonna not do drugs.
Right. And that's, and that's just, I wanted to use an issue like that maybe because it's less polarizing because I think everybody wants kids to be free of drugs.
Go back to a polarizing, you know, you could go back to a polarizing topic. Look at sex education, right? So do we not teach it because it's uncomfortable? And now our kids are, just like with drugs, are more, if, if their kids are gonna be sexually active, now they're doing so without the tools to know, to know how to be safe.
Right. That's why that whole cop topic is so tough because I actually think there's benefit. You know, I think there's benefit to talking about, uh, just normalizing the fact that it's, it's okay to be awkward and clumsy and stuff, but I just, that's a time and a place. It's just, it's just tough.
I thought that's what you're, the point of your podcast was.
What's that? Sex, sex, sex education?
No, to prove that it's okay to be
To be clumsy? What? Is that a jab? Is that a jab? That's a good one. Hey, so we're gonna get out here. For anybody listening, Anthony Reed for School Board, Springfield, Oregon. Uh, we had a comment early in the episode from, uh, Thomas that I wanted to read. It says, Anthony Reed will fight for every day Springfielders and their families. He always has. And that is a fact, and I agree. So thank you, Thomas, for your comment. Uh, if you're listening to this and you'd like to donate to Anthony's campaign, you can go to, the Facebook is the, is the best place.
If you go to the Facebook, we have a, a link pinned at the top where you can, where you can donate to the campaign.
To Anthony Reed for Springfield School Board. And then if you'd like to donate to the podcast, uh, you can go to strpod.com and then find out how. Uh, remember that the podcast is always in audio and video. You can watch on YouTube. And if you're gonna watch on YouTube, make sure that you click on the live tab, because I do all of my podcasts[1765.86]